Draft of the financial guidelines in its packet today. I would recommend that we can postpone that one until we have a draft of the financial guidelines from the finance committee.
Okay, and Anna?
I'm gonna say the one that nobody wants.
I'm sorry?
I'm gonna say the thing that nobody wants. Is it possible to do a meeting on the 11th? I know. But I'm looking like I'm looking at the 18th and we're either gonna be here till 1 a.m. today or 1 a.m. on the 18th. So is it?
And and may I just recall people, we had to do this last time we ended the term too. We had to add an extra meeting.
Lynn, we do have a we do have we do have a special meeting scheduled for the 11th, the orientation for the new councils. We will be a meeting of the full council.
Can we add to that agenda?
And we could move on to a full council meeting that night.
It's already posted as a council.
The whole meeting is a council meeting. It's a special council meeting. If you wanted to put other regular business on to the special council agenda, you could do that.
So I'm gonna make the following proposal.
Can I? Sorry, can I finish the? If if we do it, I think that it would make most sense to move the goals to that session as it's something that will apply to the folks who are coming to the orientation and they could benefit for not as a part of the discussion, but from watching it if they're already here.
Okay. Is there any reason we need to do carryover tonight? No, that's the 18th. So the financial goals we're doing on the 11th. The 18th, we're doing the guidelines, carryover on the 18th.
Sorry.
18th. Are Andy, do you? No, I'm sorry. I I skipped over town manager evaluation. Just hold that. Town manager goals 11th?
Yes.
Financial guidelines. Andy, do you think you'd be ready by the 11th?
Probably not. Think we need to the 18th.
Okay, carryover discussion, the 18th? Yes?
It kind of has to be. It's
Okay. Calendar, can we do that on the 11th?
Yes, and should we send you feedback in the meantime?
Yes.
Shouldn't we just discuss that feedback now since it was conflicting?
Sure. We can. Okay, we're going to deal with that one tonight and get the feedback.
Oh, sorry.
Town manager compensation. Okay, fine. So we have two items we're gonna do tonight, town manager evaluation and the calendar and then the compensation. So town manager evaluation, I've done two different revisions. One was later today when it was called to my attention by Mandy Jo Hanke that I mixed up some stuff. And so I went back to the original paragraph with some slight changes and then gave you the example of what Mandy Jo had suggested as a substitute for that. And then any other and I included the table and then I took the feedback I received from four counselors and tried to integrate that into the memo. So the thought, the issue or the version you should be looking at is the version that's in your packet and in the center of the title, it says V period two. Now, we can handle this one of two ways, see if there's any specific comments, but you could also send me any additional changes and we could adopt it on the 11th. As long as it does not impact the town manager's evaluation discussion, compensation discussion. Mandy Jo?
I had suggested in my feedback to you, and I know it's not in here and it's not in here for a reason, but that's why I'm gonna bring it up tonight.
That's fine.
That the evaluation memo delete what on version two begins on page five and runs all the way to page 25. In other words, that the evaluation memo delete all of the summaries of each of the counselor comments for each goal and all of the documentation related to that. The reason I suggested that deletion and I'd like the council to consider it is because summarizing 13 individual counselors' comments and making sure they are comprehensive summaries and accurate summaries takes not just a lot of time from someone doing it, but also will take a lot of negotiation time here in the council meeting to make sure we're all happy with each of those. I believe there are 13 different goal summaries there. And the manager two weeks ago stated himself that he reads our individual comments closely and takes them to heart. And so I feel like the evaluation can be just as effective if it's the the ratings and a couple of summary comments within the memo itself. And then a reference to for more information on why we got to the ratings we got, reference all of our 13 individual comments. So I would suggest we delete the bulk of what is in here and concentrate on the first four pages and changes to those pages.
I just want to point out in the revision memo, it would only be the first three pages. Because it would it would be everything starting with policy goals and beyond.
It goes to page four on the document that on the PDF that we have. Two lines are on page four.
Okay, I'm I'm probably looking at
You might be looking at the the non tracked, the clean sort of version of that. So that, yeah.
So you're but you're on a clean one if no matter which one it would from policy goals on, it would not include, based on your suggestion, it would not include the summary of the ratings and it would not include an attempt to summarize.
It it would include the summary of the ratings. That's in the memo.
Right.
But it would not include attempt to summarize the comments the counselor made, the counselors made at all. And so you would get rid of all of those summaries and all of the repeating of what those goals are. You would leave the evaluation process information that begins on the document that's in the packet for me, page 26.
Yeah, okay. So Mandy Jo did send that suggestion to me. I felt like like that was a larger change than and would need to be discussed. And so let me just say before you is a version two which incorporates changes to all parts of the existing memo. What Mandy Jo is suggesting is that we would only do the first part and the very last part, which is which provides connect which provides links and summary of methodology. Dorothy?
I disagree. I made my individual comments because I'd assumed that they were going to be just part of a summary. They're not meant to be standalone comments in any way. I so we were told the process was going to be a summary of it and that I think should not be changed at this point retroactively. I also don't think that I want to spend a tremendous amount of time, more time on the town manager evaluation. I think that we have done that. People have spoken, people have written. And, you know, if we're gonna just fight over every single thing, then, you know, I am leaving the conference, the council, okay? Other people have to think that they can stand it, that they can put up with these kind of meetings that go on and on and on. And I I very satisfied, I I haven't seen Lynn's latest document. I had printed out, I printed it out, got the the other one, the wrong one, I guess. But what I've seen was fine. And I think the town manager is smart enough to be able to figure out what we were saying and what we meant and to know that we value his work and had some suggestions. But that we're not gonna go after with knit, 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 little point. So I I would like to just do this quickly. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? So we have two options here. One is I'll take additional comments and bring it back on the 11th. The other one is to take the motion that's on your motion sheet and move. Kathy?
I I just wanted to say, Lynn, I thought you did a great job on the revision. So I'm agreeing with Dorothy. My literally, my only comment was the bar chart was missing a bar label to give you a sense of my super careful reading.
I corrected that by
No, and it's been corrected.
Giving it more space.
I'm comfortable with this, but go ahead with with your motion. I just wanted to acknowledge the amount of work that went in to the revision and I thank you for it.
Mandy Jo?
If we're gonna keep the summaries, I have a lot of requests to revise the summaries.
Okay, then I'm going to suggest you that we I take suggestions from people for revisions. I need them by Wednesday of this week. I'll bring this back on the 11th. Okay? All right, so with that, that will come back on the 11th. As stated earlier, the goals will come back on the 11th, the 18th, the finance, financial guidelines and the carryover will come back. Are there comments on the calendar?
Lynn, Lynn, before you move to the calendar, I'd like to suggest the executive session be moved to the 11th so that you can vote on the evaluation before you vote on compensation.
Okay, can I also suggest that on the 11th, the town manager and I might like to do our state of the town address? Not that we spent any time this weekend on it, but that's okay. Paul, you okay with that? You know what? Look at it this way, the new counselors coming in, we'll get to hear it. Okay. All right, calendar. Comments? Anna, was this a raised hand and a raised hand?
Both of them.
All right.
April 22nd is the first day of Passover. We should not have a council meeting on the first day of Passover. And June 17th is Eid. April 22nd is a legal holiday, so that one feels pretty clear. Eid al Adza is runs from June 16th through, I can't remember the last day, but
Could you hold on a minute?
Well, I'm sorry. I know.
We see the calendar on the screen.
But I had my notes. Do you mean no one else had my notes?
Second of all, would you speak a little slower?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
It's possible. I'm tired. Okay. So starting over, reading my notes more slowly. April 22nd is the first day of Passover, which is a legal holiday.
Right.
June 17th is one of the days of Eid al Adza, which is four days. So it's, I believe, maybe less pressing than the first day of Passover, but still could be recognized as we're considering our calendar. Those were the two holidays that I noted. I was not looking for other things as I went through.
Okay, I Jennifer and I did, I mean Jennifer, excuse me, Athena and I did realize that there was a mistake by doing the 22nd of April. And the 17th of June, I'm gonna just ask, is that a holiday people feel we need to avoid? I'm sorry.
It's Eid. It's an Islamic Muslim holiday.
It is.
Eid al Adza, it is an Islamic holiday.
Right. It's an Islamic holiday.
It's celebrated for three to four days during that time.
And is that the first night?
It's not. I believe the first night is the Sunday.
Okay.
That's why I said I don't think it's as pressing as Passover, but I wanted to note it as it's it is a holiday. Are you sure? I thought the 16th was the first day.
We so on the if we move April 22nd, we would either go to April 8th or we would go to April 29th. Or we would only have one meeting in April, which seems a little not reasonable. So is there a preference on April 8th or the 29th?
The 29th is the second to last evening of Passover and I
That's a problem.
Right, it's it's day eight.
Okay, so it
It's day seven it would be because day one is the day one is the 20 sec, well, evening one is the 22nd. Day one is the 23rd and so evening eight is the 28th.
Okay, so it may I make it April 8th. What's wrong?
Pat Pat got disconnected.
Thank you for letting us know.
She can she's here in the town room, so she can still participate. She just won't be on Zoom.
Okay, so we have it up on the screen, Pat. Your microphone's working.
Yeah.
And
You just won't have your video.
So the eighth, I think. Yeah.
Thank you. I am requesting that we add a regular meeting on July 1 and on August 5. Those would be the typical regular meeting dates for both of those months in the last four, five years of the council. Calendars have regularly tried to not put meetings on. I'll I'll talk about July 1 separately than August 5, but we've generally not tried to put a meeting on August 5 or the first meeting, first Monday in August. And then we've added it to a calendars if needed and then we've run into, we have to have it. I don't think there's any time in the last five years we haven't needed it. And when it's put in as if needed, people schedule vacations and then we run into quorum problems. So I believe we need to actually list it on the calendar as a regular meeting. If for some reason we don't actually need it, it will get canceled, but we don't, we shouldn't even say if needed. We should just put it there and expect to have it. July 1. Normally, we have only had one meeting in July because we've had three meetings in June because we've generally had the very last Monday in June, a meeting to get the the budget done. It that meeting's listed as special meeting if needed on June 24th. I would, as a precautionary measure, list July 1 as a regular meeting and just have us assume we're having one of those two, but not both of them. June 24 or July 1. Depends on whether the budget's ready on June 17. It's whether you do the 24th or July 1.
Yeah, I would suggest we keep July, June 24th and get rid of July 1. Because June 24th, we can still pass the budget. By July 1, we have a little problem.
Right, which is why we normally have three in June and one in July.
Yeah, so I would eliminate July 1.
That would be okay with me if with the change of regular meeting on June 24.
Are there other comments? I'm looking I'm looking for hands. Mandy Jo, you still have your hand up. All right, with this calendar, then I am gonna make a motion. Trying to get something off the agenda. To adopt the 2024 town council meeting calendar as presented. As amended? Okay, you're right. It was in the packet. All right, as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other questions or comments? Then we'll take a roll call vote. I believe we're starting with Annika Lopes. Yeah, you do.
Yes, sure.
You can even bind the next council in this case. Michelle Miller, you need to vote too.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam, you need to vote too.
Yes.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
You gotta live with it. Kathy, you have to live with it.
Yes.
Andy, you have to live with it.
Yes.
Jennifer, you have to live with it.
Yes.
Alicia, you have to live with it.
Yes.
Shalini, you can bind the next council.
Yes.
Pat, you have to live with it?
No. I, I.
Anna, can you live with it?
I.
Lynn Greysmerson, I.
Mandy Jo Hanke.
Hi.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Alicia, did Alicia vote?
Oh. Alicia, you voted, didn't you?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Michelle.
Sorry.
I I went so fast, it's possible she didn't. Okay, am I hearing that we're moving the executive session to next week because to the 11th? Okay. That's right, we haven't. Okay. Then in that case, Dorothy?
I just wanted to say thank you to Mandy Jo for looking at the calendar and taking the time to think it through. I appreciate that.
I I do want to mention that actually Athena and I tried that and we messed up on the one issue. And we already did know it. I just want to give credit to Athena who first put it together. And we did look at holidays and we missed that one, so our fault.
That was anonymous.
I'm sorry?
Anna, I see you.
No, I was no, thanks.
What?
Nothing. It's all good.
Okay. Okay, appointments. The only thing I want to mention is in your packet is a letter from the town clerk. It it notifies us of two vacancies on the housing authority because the positions were not filled during the election. One position was filled by write-in and that person has since declined. So in the packet for either the 11th or the 18th, I will advance a calendar that will begin with January 2nd for because that's when the 45 days start counting by which we have to do this. And before then, I would hope to be able to talk to the chair of the housing authority and talk about when what their cycle of meetings looked like. One of the reasons this is not as urgent as the school committee was is because it's a five member body. It has three voting members on it and they so after on as of January 2nd, they will still have a quorum and can still do business. Mandy Jo, you have your hand up.
Except I think the charter requires we fill it within 45 days, just like any other one. So it is just as urgent from getting it done from the complying with the charter point of view.
It is, and that's one reason why the calendar will start for on January 2nd. Okay. Committee reports? Any CRC? Are you still speaking to us?
We have a meeting next Thursday. On the agenda will be we will start with nuisance property. Nuisance House renamed nuisance property by law. From there, we will move on to rental registration by law. In addition to speaking and discussing the requests for revisions that everyone who wants them considered will send me by Friday.
At noon.
At noon, I have to get them out to Athena by the by 1 P.M. because of my afternoon schedules. So if I don't have them by noon, they're not making it in the packet before the weekend. But we will also discuss on rental registration incorporating nuisance by law. Nuisance property by law language into the rental permitting by law to add potential violation, no remedies, remedies, enforcement actions to the permitting by law as they relate to in violations of the nuisance property by law. It'll all make sense when a report is written. But the the those will be that will be part of the discussion of rental permitting on the 14th. After that, we will move to the transition memo. Solar by law will not be on for discussion on the 14th. It will be pushed to the next council committee.
Right.
It's in the, yeah, it'll be concluded in the transition memo, but the transition memo is undergoing major revisions after tonight.
We just dumped on you. Elementary School Building Committee, Kathy or Alicia? Kathy, anything?
There's there's a meeting this Friday. An agenda is posted, but I have to add one additional item that we're gonna talk about a process for figuring out what playground equipment. So we're in the really fun phase of the project. But it it's at 8:30 on Friday morning. The the only other details around this is we are rapidly moving to get it on the planning board agenda, the conservation committee agenda and talking about the first site package, which would be in the spring. So this is is moving a lot of moving parts that are moving quickly.
I only have one request and that is would you make sure that the council and the public knows when the fence is gonna go up so we can start observing?
Absolutely, and you did ask that last time. And I haven't been able to come back with a good answer yet because we're talking about can we widen the driveways to go in and out and remove a tree? So the trucks can get in and then the fence, there is a date. I'll I'll find out about the fences. Yep.
The tree's the one that's gonna give you the problem. All right, finance committee, Andy.
I was going to make a report tonight, but I think I'll just put it into writing. It was supplementing the piece that we already submitted.
Thank you. GOL, Pat?
The report's in the packet. I'm assuming everyone read it.
We did thoroughly. Jones Library, Anika?
Jones Library had a very quick meeting last time where we really just approved some pending invoices. There was no financial report and the next meeting date has not been announced yet.
TSO, Anika?
I say one. Thing about GOL, we have a meeting this Friday, which is unusual at 9 a.m. And we're all, yes, and also on the 13th at our regular 9:30 time.
Thank you.
TSO will meet this coming Thursday at 7 p.m. and we will have a packed agenda.
Okay, liaison reports, any? Okay, Paul?
You have a written report if there are any questions or comments. I'm open to them.
And that's the only written report for the month of December, so you could still ask questions next week or the following week. Okay. Topic's not reasonably anticipated. We're not doing an executive session. Are there any counselor comments? Yes, Jennifer?
I just want to say that District 3, Dorothy and I are having our you know, last district meeting of the year on December 12th at the Jones Library in the Woodbury Room from 6 to 8. And because it overlaps with dinner, we will have pizza. And it will, for the district, it'll be an opportunity to also say thank you to Dorothy.
I believe District 5 is doing a meeting too.
District 5 already had our meeting.
You did?
We did.
Okay. I believe that all districts have met the requirement of at least two meetings, so. You will as of next week. You know what? I'm glad I checked. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Counselor comments? Pam?
Thank you. Tonight was a really good example of the huge amount of information in the packet. And unfortunately, some of it arrived really just today. So it is, it is, we don't have a mandate for information to be provided by a certain date and time ahead of a meeting, but it's it's really not possible sometimes to keep up with that load. And it's not that it's a load, but it's it's too late and it's too much sometimes. How do we fix that? Do you know, do we just say we aren't discussing it if we don't have it in the packet by a certain day? We've talked about that, but we don't seem to enforce it.
And rules of procedure have actually talked about this in GOL. Yeah. Yeah. Any other counselor comments?
We have a meeting next week that begins at what time?
I haven't heard responses from everybody that I polled, but I think 6:30 works for everyone, so we should plan on 6:30.
And do you think the orientation might start earlier?
No.
No, so 6:30.
And the orientation, for those that might not come to the orientation, because maybe they're not gonna be counselors next time. Is there an estimate of time where they
We should allow
Actually show up.
How long do you want to allow for the orientation?
When we set the agenda on Wednesday, we'll set a time to wrap the orientation so we can let counselors who aren't interested in that portion of the meeting know when they can attend for the regular business.
Okay.
But we haven't gotten into the details of the orientation agenda enough to for me to estimate. I think it should be an hour, but I want to make sure that that works with what we've planned first. So but we'll let you know on Wednesday if that's okay.
So, but we'll let you know on Wednesday if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Pam, you have your hand up? Okay, Mandy Jo, you have your hand up?
I want to thank Athena. I know it's not the end of the month yet, but we just added another meeting to you and all of the packet items and all.
You added three.
Well, three meetings this month, but we just. Oh, no, 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 but tonight, we, we added next week's meeting tonight.
Apparently it already existed. We just made it worse.
Yeah, so I just want to thank Athena for all she does and I know she's been under a lot of stress and all for what we've been doing, but thank you, Athena.
Well deserved. Extremely well deserved. Are there any other counselor comments? Saying none, the meeting is adjourned. It's eleven oh six.